Welcome to the Meet the Candidates Forum for at-large city council candidates here on WRFA. The candidates running in Jamestown for the three at-large seats open on city council are Christina Cardinelli on the Democratic and Working Families line, Randall Deversa on the Republican and Conservative lines, Ellen DiTanto on the Democrat and Working Families lines, Kim Eklund on the Republican and Conservative lines, Alyssa Porter on the Democrat and Working Families lines, and Jeffrey Russell on the Republican and Conservative lines. I'm Julia Cisla Hanley. I'm the Public Affairs Director for WRFA. I'm being joined tonight by media partners Terry Frank of Media One Group's WJTN and Justin Gould of WNY News Now. This event is being broadcast live on 107.9 FM and streaming on wrfaalp.com. You can also watch the live stream of this forum on media partner WNY News Now's Facebook page and on wnynewsnow.com/live. This forum is made possible through funding from the Chautauqua Region Community Foundation and the Corporation for Public Broadcasting. Our panel will pose a series of questions to the candidates to discuss. Candidates will be given four minutes each for an opening statement. Afterward, they will have up to 90 seconds to respond to each question. If a candidate runs out of time, our official timekeeper Gavin Paternitti will notify the candidate with the following sound. They will then have 10 seconds to wrap up, at which point then I will cut them off nicely. Also, they will be notified when they have 30 seconds remaining on the clock by a sign from Mr. Paternitti. So, let's begin. We, this morning, drew names from ahead to determine order for opening statements. Jeff Russell will go first, followed by Ellen DiTanto, and then down the line. We'll rotate the starting candidates for each question thereafter. Mr. Russell, you have four minutes for your opening remarks.
Good evening. Firstly, I'd like to thank WRFA LP and all in the attendance for the opportunity to speak. My name is Jeffrey Russell, and I'm seeking reelection as your Jamestown City Councilman at Large. I was born, raised, and have resided in Jamestown my whole life. I graduated from Jamestown High School, Jamestown Community College, and attended SUNY at Brockport. I also attended North American Institute of Aviation, obtaining a commercial pilot's license. I'm a graduate of Chautauqua County Sheriff's Academy. I served the community for 23 years as a police officer, retiring from the Jamestown Police Department in 2018. I'm presently employed by the Jamestown Public School System as a Safety/Security Officer at the Jamestown High School. I'm presently, as your City Councilman, the last year and a half has been a tumultuous time, to say the least. However, the council, under the leadership of Council President Dolch, has forged on. The Republican-led council worked in a bipartisan fashion, passing a difficult budget during COVID, with only having to eliminate one position in City Hall. The city is well-positioned fiscally, with a general fund balance of over $4 million. Also during this time, I've been working hard. I presently serve on the Public Safety Committee. On June 12, 2020, then-Governor Cuomo issued an executive order requiring each local government in New York State to review and adopt a police and reform plan by April 1 of 2021. Once again, a challenge during a pandemic. Stakeholder meetings with members of the city were held via Zoom. The information was tabulated, public meetings were held, and the final draft was passed by council and forwarded to the state. The Public Safety Committee, including myself, have exceeded the state requirements by continuing to meet to enact the necessary changes. The second committee I serve on and presently chair is the City Healthcare Committee. The City Healthcare Committee has met over the past year, sometimes weekly. The group is made up of retirees, city staff, and active union employees. The group worked collaboratively to improve healthcare coverage and, in the process, save both employees and the city money on healthcare costs. As a result of this hard work, the city is now offering an optional Medicare Advantage Plan via Highmark, formerly Blue Cross and Blue Shield of Western New York. Medicare-eligible retirees can now benefit from two plans, one being free of premiums for five years. The city has the potential to save in upwards of $1 million a year from a budget where 17% has been eaten up by insurance costs. In closing, I'm once again asking for your trust and support on November 2 to continue this work that I'm not done with. Please reelect Jeff Russell for City Councilman at Large. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Russell. We'll now move forward to Ms. DiTanto. You have four minutes for your opening remarks.
Thank you, Julia, and thank you to WRFA, Media One, and Western New York News for hosting this Candidates Forum. I am Ellen DiTanto, and I am running for one of the three council-at-large positions. I believe that together we can build a better Jamestown. I am a Chautauqua County native, and I have been a property owner and taxpayer in Jamestown for almost 40 years. My family has set down deep roots in this community, and I want Jamestown to be a place where my children and grandchildren can thrive. Our city is at a critical crossroads. I have years of experience in county government, higher education, small business, and not-for-profit organizations. I have built and executed multimillion-dollar budgets and have worked on collaborative efforts between local governments and the private sector, specifically to build fiber connections to service county and city government services. My professional experience as Sales Director for business-to-business sales at a regional telecommunications provider, and my current position as Executive Director at Jamestown Community College's Faculty/Student Association, have provided me with expertise in contract negotiations, public-private partnership agreements, public utility regulations, budgeting, and personnel management. I believe that Jamestown City Government needs to be forward-thinking and embrace change in a way that puts our city at the forefront of innovation and excellence. My expertise in broadband services and my proven ability to bring private and public partners together to complete projects are two of the areas where I think I can help to make a difference. I have served as the Chair of the Zoning Board of Appeals for 10 years, and I know that the current zoning regulations need to be updated to allow for more flexibility in certain zones for development. In March, when I announced that I was seeking this council seat, I said that Jamestown is at a critical juncture, but that we have a real opportunity to build a better Jamestown as we emerge from this pandemic. Jamestown has a chance to target federal rescue funds to improve neighborhoods and to lower the tax burden on city residents. We have a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity to think creatively about Jamestown's future and to attract new homeowners and investors who are no longer geographically limited to large metro areas in order to build their professional careers. Remote work now allows people to choose where to live, and they can take advantage of an abundance of natural resources, enjoy a lower cost of living, and be closer to family. In the last few months, the city has been awarded $28 million in rescue funds. That should be a game-changer for this city. During the first of four listening sessions this summer, I spoke about the need to think strategically and creatively, to lessen the fiscal distress, and make Jamestown a place where people want to live, to work, to recreate, and, most importantly, to do business. City government leaders must be willing to carve a new path for Jamestown, and that should include opportunities for partnerships with public and private entities, the possibility of some metro-like services that would end costly replication amongst the many local governments, and make these services better and more responsive for our citizens. We must demand a seat at the table where regional economic development decisions are made, so that Jamestown can become a city with a balance of economic opportunities and public services. If given the opportunity, I would work to make Jamestown more economically viable. I hope to earn your vote, so that together we can build a better Jamestown.
Thank you, Mrs. DiTanto. Mr. Deversa, you have four minutes for your opening remarks.
Hello, I'm Randy Deversa, and I'd like to thank all of you for allowing me, giving me the chance to speak here this evening. My main career has been in public service for most of my adult life, and I have lived in Jamestown most of my adult life also. I was employed by the New York State DOT for 30 years, serving as an equipment operator and supervisor. I served on many committees such as the Snow and Ice Removal Strategies and a Certified Driver Improvement Instructor, and I was a sexual harassment instructor, and I was the recipient of several REAP awards for my efforts for going above in the call of duties. I have always had the best interest and safety in mind with the people in the community. As a board member, coach, and commissioner of youth sports, I have overseen budgets and staffing, as well as being a longtime successful business owner and operator of a video production company. With my past experience, I know what it takes to have checks and balances, to be a good, responsible leader, and to ensure a good product is delivered, which I will carry over into council duties as I work for the people of Jamestown. I was brought up with strong family values, with encouragement and praise. I learned from my dad, who was a well-respected police officer in the city of Jamestown. I participated in youth sports and learned that teamwork would build success, and have many longtime friendships from my past community activities, which include volunteering for fundraising efforts, for breast cancer screening, and other events like that. My goal is to ensure the same amount of service or more will not be increased in taxes. And that's it.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Deversa. Ms. Cardinelli, you have four minutes for your opening remarks.
Thank you so much. Good evening, Jamestown. First, I would like to say thank you to WRFA and the Regulane for hosting this event. Thank you to everyone watching at home. I appreciate your civic engagement so much. And I would like to say a special thank you to Jason Sample, Julia, Justin, and Terry. Thank you for being here.
My name is Christina Cardinelli, and I am pleased to be here tonight to speak to you. I was born and raised in Jamestown, and I grew up on the south side in the city. Throughout my professional career, I've worked as a Creative Director, a Corporate Sales Trainer, and a Sales and Marketing Manager. In 2017, I launched my own endeavor, and I started my own sales and marketing consultant business. I offer a variety of services to struggling businesses, like advertisement design, budget restructuring, or sometimes I will implement a comprehensive sales and marketing strategy. I offer pro bono work to Black business owners, Hispanic business owners, and women business owners, to provide equity and to give back to my community. I believe my experience with budget reallocation, sourcing new revenue, and being overall creative with business would greatly benefit our city. Most importantly, throughout everything that I have done, I've worked in restaurants. Most of my life, I've been forced to have two jobs, and one of them has always been a restaurant job. My life as a restaurant worker was difficult. I was often injured, I had no health insurance, and in my early twenties, before I found success, I was working full-time, and I had to apply for food stamps. I was choosing between paying rent and buying groceries. This experience as a restaurant worker inspired me to run for State Assembly in 2020. I woke up every day, ready to fight for working families, equity, and compassion in politics. I campaigned my heart out in the middle of a grueling pandemic against a 10-year incumbent. And you know what? I lost. And that's all right, because running for office ignited something that I didn't know I had. Losing only made me want to fight harder. I stepped forward to run again, and this time for Jamestown City Council at Large. I want to move us forward. I want to change our city using the principles that drive me, the principles that I discovered, fighting for working people, equity, and compassion in politics. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Cardinelli. We'll move on to Ms. Porter. You have four minutes.
Thank you. Like many others, I want to say thank you to WRFA and everyone who's here this evening for hosting us and doing the important work of creating opportunities for voters to hear from candidates through this election cycle, so we can make informed decisions about the leadership of our city and county. I'd also like to take a moment to thank the other at-large candidates who are here this evening for their commitment to the democratic process and willingness to serve the people of Jamestown. My name is Alyssa Porter. I'm an Ohio native who chose Jamestown because I believe in our city. When we were moving to Western New York, choosing Jamestown for my family was one of the easiest decisions we made, because I saw a community who cares about one another and were actively working to better our neighborhoods. I saw a potential and a future that I wanted my family to be a part of. I am running for city council because I want to take an active role in ushering in that promising future, a future that attracts and retains new residents like my family. I also want to live in a city that puts the needs of our residents at the forefront of all conversations and recognize that it takes leaders who will prioritize listening to, learning from, and working with our neighbors to make that happen. This work will not be easy, but with my personal and professional background, a focus on innovative solutions, and, most importantly, a commitment to putting community first, I believe we can tackle the challenges that Jamestown is facing. I grew up in a blue-collar family, where I learned how much could be accomplished through hard work, coming together as a team, and by helping others. I was taught to listen to the people around me and learn from our differences. These lessons have made seemingly impossible goals achievable. I carried that learning into college with me and all the way through earning my master's degree in Recreation Administration, and while finishing the last few months of graduate school, when my child would be placed in my home at the rambunctious age of two and a half. Through sudden parenthood, I learned resiliency, problem-solving, and solidified what it truly means to prioritize the needs of others. In my career as a recreation professional, I have had the opportunity to work in K-12 Education, Municipal Recreation, the Arts and Youth Programming, doing everything from running camps to managing complicated budgets, fostering critical community partnerships, performing playground audits, and crisis management. The knowledge I have gained from these experiences will be invaluable to my ability to lead as a member of city council if elected. In addition to the work that I am paid for, I also hold a variety of volunteer positions, which currently include board membership with Infinity Visual and Performing Arts and Cornell Cooperative Extension, as well as serving as a member of the United Way Allocation Committee, which has been a phenomenal opportunity to learn about the many organizations in our area that support our residents. I've also recently added co-leader of my daughter's Girl Scout troop back onto my list of volunteer commitments and serve as a member of the Parks, Recreation, and Conservation Commission for Jamestown. At the end of the day, what is most important to me is that holding public office is about public service, and service means listening to the people you represent. If we are to build a Jamestown for the future, it has to be constructed on a foundation that begins with community. Our strength as a city lies in our people. I am committed to listening to and serving all of our neighbors. I believe in our community. I believe in Jamestown. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Porter. We'll move now to Ms. Eklund. You have four minutes for your response.
Thank you very much. Again, I would also like to thank WRFA, the Regulane, Western New York News Now, and Radio Jamestown for the opportunity to conduct a very well-structured, mannered, and run discussion about the candidates. Again, my name is Kim Eklund. I am running for reelection for city council. I have been fortunate enough to serve on city council for 18 years. That is a long time, but I have also learned things every year. It's a never-ending endeavor. Personally, I have worked at Bush Industries, which is now actually e-solutions furniture in Western New York since 1989, in many different roles in finance. My background is very strong in finance, which has served me well as the current Finance Chair for city council this last term. Currently, I serve as the Senior Data Management and Costing Analyst and Supervisor. At a personal level, I volunteer tremendously throughout the community. I have been devoted to the Babe Ruth World Series since its inception in 1980, and currently serve as the Vice President of the organization. I also have served in many roles and many board member positions throughout, but have lessened that role as I've been on city council to lessen my time and devote that to the residents and taxpayers of the city of Jamestown. I also currently serve still as a mentor through Chautauqua Striders and have been one for 15 years, a way in which I inherited and adopted a son. It is a great program and another tremendous asset to this community that I speak very highly of. As far as my role on city council, I have been very true, very consistent, and very factual-based throughout my tenure. I bring to the table a lot of experience, not only in the finance background, but I serve as a member of the Parks and Recreation, of which my father retired from the Jamestown City Parks. I have a vast background in that service area. I have a vast background in giving back to this community. That's something that my father instilled to me. In my spare time currently, I am also very devoted to suicide prevention after the loss of my nephew. In addition to that, I am a founding member for the Buddy Walk, which is associated with kids with Down Syndrome. Serving as an elected official is a great avenue, and I have learned a lot, as well as taught people a lot about how community works. I have been endeavored in to continue this role for this two years, and I think that these last two years have been tough, and we have had a new administration, we have suffered through a pandemic, we are still wreaking on the havoc of a pandemic, and I don't see those going away anytime soon. We are faced with a gift in the ARPA funding, but it also something that I feel we need to be very conscientious and smart about, and sustainability for this, to position this city going forward. We are on the verge, it should not be a gift that should be treated lightly, but I also feel that we, as a council, have not been in a position where we have been able to do things that I felt needed to be done throughout the years to bring these so-called "better things" to Jamestown, or more engagement, or improved housing. We are at our taxable limit, and we need to do due diligence and continue this path that we've had the last two years, and I look forward to the opportunity to serve this community again.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Eklund. So, we are going to now move along to our first question. This is the only question that was provided to candidates ahead of time. The question is, what are the top issues or challenges facing the city of Jamestown? We are starting now with Mrs. DiTanto. You have 90 seconds for your response.
Thank you, Julia. Jamestown has suffered from a lack of substantial economic development. That has happened not only in recent years, but over time, leading to a need for more public services, greater pressure on public safety, higher crime rates, and no increase in our tax base, which has brought us dangerously close to budgetary crises. This is our biggest issue and represents our biggest challenge. We have a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity to change the course of our city with the help of the $28 million in federal rescue funds. We must think outside of the box to get a substantial return on that investment in Jamestown if we are going to change its trajectory. We need to collaborate on economic development opportunities, and we need to balance the need for good-paying jobs in the city versus our current role as the Center for Support Services in the South County. We must not use the $28 million to just put Band-Aids on long festering problems in the city. Yes, we must invest in infrastructure, water, sewer, broadband capacity, capital equipment, and vehicles, but we must also commit to an investment plan that will deliver a substantial return. We cannot stand by and let the county IDA not help us. The city businesses need to be staying in the city. We have had opportunities to do that, and yet they've moved outside. We must demand a seat at the table. We must make sure that buildable commercial lots or old manufacturing facilities can be used to pitch and get new opportunities in our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Deversa, you have 90 seconds to respond. The question, again, what are the top issues or challenges facing the city of Jamestown?
Well, one thing, since I have been involved with EMS and police, I do believe that, I think that we are lacking a little bit, or a lot, with manpower, with both police and fire. And I know that with the tax cap, that we've had a hard time finding the funds to increase the manpower, but I think that it's absolutely imperative. You know, I listen to the radio with a scanner and that, and Jamestown is constantly calling for outside agencies for help all the time with police and with rescue calls also in EMS. And I think something needs to be done with that. That would be one of the big other issues. Another one would be for some of the dilapidated houses that are condemned and boarded up. When I talk and I talk to the voters, they say that they would, it's a real eyesore, and they would like to see something done as far as getting those razed and getting them tore down. And I understand there's a cost involved, and if, with the ARPA funds that we are getting, I mean, it would be nice if we could swing some of that. But other than that, Jamestown, as far as commerce, we really do need it. I think we should work with the county as far as to see what they may have to offer.
Thank you, Mr. Deversa. Ms. Cardinelli, you may answer the question next, which is, what are the top issues or challenges facing the city of Jamestown? And again, 90 seconds for your response.
Thank you so much. It pains me to actually say this, but our top issue and challenge facing Jamestown currently right now is some of our very own council members. Just two days ago, all of us that you see here, all six of us, we were invited to join the League of Women Voters debate, and all three Republicans, two of which are our current representatives, declined to attend. I think that right there demonstrates the top issue and challenge facing Jamestown. It felt like they were picking and choosing who was worthy of their time, and they declined to communicate and represent constituents. I refuse to do that. I will show up, and I will be accountable, and I will be communicative, excuse me, and I promise to answer the hard questions. So, besides that, what are the issues that we need to address? Drug addiction and mental health, and that is why I've worked so hard with Alba Devita and Dunkirk to bring the Mobile Health Unit to the city of Jamestown. Another top issue, housing as a whole. City code enforcement, blight, slum lords, all of it, it's all connected. We have a lackluster nuisance law for properties. We also do not have a rental inspection law. That means that no one ever checks a property, once it's purchased, like for tenants, to make sure they are living in suitable conditions. As a proactive member, I plan to propose both of these. Thank you.
Thank you. And just a reminder to candidates, when you hear the ding of the bell, you do have 10 seconds to wrap up your comments, so you don't, are cut off right away.
Thank you.
Moving on to Ms. Porter, the same question. What are the top issues or challenges facing the city of Jamestown? And you have 90 seconds.
Thank you. There are a number of critical issues and challenges facing the city of Jamestown, from an inadequate public transportation system to high rates of poverty, disinterested landlords, and severely lacking digital infrastructure, just to name a few. But there are two issues that rise to the top of this list for me, and that is our declining population size and our community members not feeling heard, seen, or valued by the city. As our tax base shrinks, so do the funds available to invest in programs and initiatives that support our residents. I said this in the forum on Tuesday night, and I will say it again. We have to take an innovative approach to attracting and retaining new businesses and community members. We have to be willing to capitalize on opportunities for growth, like what we are seeing with the decriminalization of cannabis and progress in the green energy sector. We have to become a remote-friendly work destination and make necessary improvements to our digital infrastructure to do so, and we must address outdated regulations that hinder progress. Most importantly, though, we must prioritize our residents who are already here. As public servants, we have to recognize the privileges and biases we bring into this work, so we can humbly enter conversations with those whose lived experiences are different from our own, and we must remove barriers for the groups of people who have historically and systemically been left out of positions of power, our disabled community, our LGBTQIA+ community members, and our Black, Brown, and Indigenous community members. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Eklund, you have 90 seconds to answer the question of what are the top issues and challenges facing the city.
Thank you very much. It all boils down to the same thing we've all repeated, housing stock, sustainability, and financial stability for the residents. To me, we have had some really adverse reactions, given the pandemic right now. For instance, Housing Court is not even able to practice. If they are, it's once a week or twice a month. That limits the ability for us to enforce codes and issues that are, in fact, affecting housing. So, I want to make that clear. That's not that the city is not addressing them. Right now, currently, our hands are tied in a lot of ways. But one of the biggest issues for me is, has always been, and always been an issue, is public safety, and that just doesn't mean police and fire. That means that the residents need to feel safe and comfortable in this town, and need to be sustainable, whether it's jobs, ability to be provided services, or any of the such. So, to me, those are the top items that I feel. It's always been public safety, housing, and financial sustainability.
Thank you. Mr. Russell, finally, you- Ms. Russell, finally, you get to go last on this question. The question was, top issues or challenges facing the city of Jamestown? And you have 90 seconds.
Firstly, I'd like to rebuttal Ms. Cardinelli on candidates not being at that particular event. I want to point out that last evening, there was an event at Christ First Church involving public safety, and the citizens of Jamestown that have concern about their public safety. And I'll note that Ms. Cardinelli was not at that event. So, I question Ms. Cardinelli's, if she really supports public safety, or she engaged in the same mantra of defunding the police. But secondly, I'll just reiterate what a lot of other people said, that we do have a shrinking tax base and a shrinking population here in Jamestown. That's been going on for many years. Obviously, that affects the taxes being collected and the budget. We're at our constitutional tax limit. Another thing that people aren't talking about is the BPU. New York State wants to move away from fossil fuels in the future. So, my question is, is what is the plan for the BPU in supplying power to our area? No one's been bringing this up. I know the BPU recently purchased some property just on the outskirts of the city to put in solar panels, but that's really not being discussed enough. We also obviously have a crumbling housing stock. That crumbling housing stock is owned by only 50% of homeowners, and obviously, the poverty, I see it every day in the Jamestown High School. And the last issue is the drugs in the city, with a major problem with meth and fentanyl that is coming across our southern border and into the city of Jamestown. Some of it is 95 to 100% pure, and it's killing our citizens.
Thank you, Mr. Russell.
Thank you very much, Julia. Good evening, candidates. City Council is currently reviewing the final master plan by Mayor Eddie Sunquist for the city's $28 million in American Rescue Plan Act funding. It's been revamped to deal more with housing and neighborhood issues. However, how do you feel about this proposal? Do you feel that it adequately addresses the problems the city is seeing? And I'll go first to Mr. Diversa.
Well, infrastructure is a big thing for me also, along with the public safety. And I believe a lot of emphasis should be made, and I made mention to it before, some of the heaving of sidewalks in the city. I have been walking and talking to a lot of people that are elderly and disabled, and they cannot maneuver their scooters or anything else that they have because some of the spots are so bad. And I said before, I understand that the cement is too costly, but the macadam would not be. Just the worst spots is the only one I'm talking about. Another one, I've talked to people that live on some of the brick roads that are heaving with wheel tracks, and I know the city would like to preserve the brick roads, I understand that for historical reasons, but some of them are really bad shape. If there was any way that we could get into the, into the ARPA funds for infrastructure, for the DPW, and some of the roads, we've been doing fairly well. I mean, every year, the DPW and the workers have been diligently doing everything they can, but I believe a little bit more could be done with those two issues that I had said there. Also, in the wintertime, I think that a couple of new vomit ears really should be looked at for the kids walking in deep snow. Thank you.
Ms. Cardinelli, your thoughts on ARPA?
Hi, it's nice to see you. So, broadband is incorporated into the plans, and I think that is fantastic. We are really going to be talking about tackling struggling families, everyone living at the poverty line. Broadband needs to be kind of a universal thing, and that is addressed, and so I appreciate that very much. In terms of mental health and affordable housing, I think we could do a little bit better with some more funds in that direction. However, once again, I will go back to the Mobile Health Unit that I have been working very hard on to bring from Dunkirk to Jamestown. For the first year, full launch, staffing, maintenance, travel expenses, it's $250,000. And as a point of reference, that's pretty comparable to our dog park that we're talking about getting for Bergman, or the revitalization of the trees are $500,000. So, I worked very hard to find a, an initiative that would be affordable, and it would be similar to the other initiatives. And finally, I would very much like to see some type of funding and plan toward public transportation. I would very much like to have a bus in the city of Jamestown. We used to have one, we no longer do, and I think that that will truly also help families and working people get from point A to point B if they happen to have a hard time with transportation. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Ms. Porter, your thoughts about the American Rescue Plan?
Thank you. You know, when I looked at the proposal for the American Rescue Plan, it was the low amount of funding that is currently allocated, or proposed to be allocated for mental health services in the city, and that allocation is going, the example project that is listed, the only one, is social workers to work with our fire and police departments, which I think is a critically important asset for our city, something that we do need to see as a response tool. But I think that we need to begin looking at prevention and proactive solutions that can help our community who struggle with mental health, especially coming off of a global pandemic, because those numbers are only continuing to increase. We have young people who are graduating high school, who haven't had a normal school year in three years. They haven't had services that they would normally have in school. I have my child here with me tonight, who has had to stay out of school because of the challenges that she has experienced over this pandemic, and I do worry that if we do not begin investing in proactive solutions to mental health, that we are setting ourselves up for long-term failure.
Thank you. Ms. Eklund, your thoughts? You've expressed a few regarding ARPA.
Yes. I have been a little bit vocal about our ARPA funding. While I do appreciate and recommend and recognize the community input at those four sessions, our job as city council currently is really, honestly, truly just beginning, and I stated that Monday night. The ARPA funding is commingling with the budget, so I had decided as a finance, we had decided as a finance committee to not approve anything thusforth, so everything is still open for discussion on the ARPA funding. But we also have to keep in mind that the ARPA funding has strict regulations on what can and cannot be used for that, and it boils down to basically public safety, health, and wellness, lost revenue, immediate stabilization both for households and businesses, and investment in water, sewer, and broadband. Those are your four basic areas in a nutshell that need to be covered. We have to be very conscientious of that, and at the same time, this is also an opportunity for this city to improve upon and deliver some things that we have not been able to do in the past 20 years. That being included, new equipment, as Mr. Diversa discussed, and other items that have not been addressed, whether it's mental health, public safety, housing, and business future in Jamestown.
Thank you. Mr. Russell, your thoughts for 90 seconds?
I was originally in favor of the broadband that the mayor's talked about. I did a little research, and I talked to some experts in the field, some of them right here in Jamestown. The gentleman that I spoke to was very familiar with it, and he basically told me, Jeff, it's not going to be profitable. You're talking about a population of, you know, roughly 30,000 people. Not everyone's going to sign on to the service, and it's going to be a losing factor, it's going to lose money. You're also going to be going up against giants like Spectrum and Verizon. So, my concern with the broadband is it's going to be a loser, and it's going, it's going to cost money. The other thing I'd like to see the ARPA funding go to is just tax relief to the citizens. Once again, we're at our constitutional tax limit. I have concerns about the mayor's budget, and the mayor's budget he puts in there that he's allocating $300,000 for possible reassessment in the city. The mayor's here tonight, I'll say this publicly, that I think if he reassesses the city of Jamestown and the citizens here, it's political suicide for him. We've already done that. People are paying a lot of tax money, and they don't want to see that again, especially the people that are buying houses right now, and a hot housing market where they're actually overpaying for houses. If those houses are reassessed, it's going to cost them even more money. I would also like to see the money go to build the neighborhoods back up again. We have the oldest, some of the oldest housing stock in the country, and it's crumbling. So, what young professionals want to come here and live in some of the neighborhoods that are around here?
Thank you.
That's my concern.
Thank you. Mrs. Detanto, 90 seconds for your response.
Thank you, Terry. As I've said before, if we don't use the majority of this money to improve our economic development, the city of Jamestown will be in the same place it is now in four years. We must move rapidly to find investors who want to build in Jamestown and invest money in Jamestown. If you look at what's happening in our region, we need to be part of that. In South Buffalo, a $200 million development has just been proposed for medical marijuana production. In the city of Oleane, a Rochester investor has just bought the Oleane City Mall to make that a multipurpose facility, residential housing, commercial development. I don't see any of those investors here in Jamestown yet, but I certainly hope that we can get some of them here. We have old manufacturing facilities that could be reused, we do have property that would be good for small commercial development, and we have been fortunate to have houses go up for sale, as Jeff Russell has said, and to sell at an artificially high price that will, in fact, improve our tax base. But we can't attract new homeowners if we don't have places for them to work, and we need investment. I really take some umbrage at the idea that broadband is going to be a loser. Broadband is not a loser when you have people who need broadband to survive and thrive, and that includes our young children. We need to have public-private partnerships. You're right, we can't do it as a pure municipal network. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Terry and Mrs. Detanto. The city of Jamestown, over the past few decades, has seen an increase in drug use, crime, and blighted homes, some of which have become more than just an eyesore to our neighborhood, but a danger to the public. Is there anything you would do if elected to address these issues? We'll start first with Mrs. Cardinelli.
Hi, thank you for the question. I definitely think that when everyone talks about public safety and public safety needing fortification, I absolutely agree with them. In terms of our fire department right now, our fire department, and this includes EMS, and this includes dispatch, and if you are somehow hurt, or if there's an injury, or if you need an ambulance, this is all inclusive, they are so stretched, they do not have capacity whatsoever. And in terms of funding, they absolutely need more funding in terms of the budget, and that would be something that I would also want to look at in terms of reallocation of funding, to fight, to give it more to our fire department. And also, recently, I kind of took a tour of all four of our fire departments, the little houses that we have within our city, and there are a lot of questions that came up about how they operate and how they tie into dispatch, and maybe we could make this a little bit easier. Maybe we could find a way to put different vehicles at different buildings, and to be honest with you, if I visited and I figured all of that out in 10 minutes, I would love to know what the rest of our council members are doing, because we had a very productive conversation of how we could possibly rebuild and restructure and lead to better public safety.
Thank you. So, on to Ms. Porter for the question. How could you address the drugs, crime, and blight in the city if elected?
Sure. So, drug use, crime, and blighted houses are three vastly different issues facing our city. I think that there is a lot of misunderstanding, specifically when it comes to drug addiction, and how those are intertwined with things like crime and blighted homes, that we have to address those misunderstandings first. Drug addiction is a disease. It is a mental health issue, it is a symptom of poverty, and it is a serious issue that impacts our families every day. We have to start with a human approach. We have to start with prevention. We need to support our organizations that are already doing that work, like the Mental Health Association. As someone whose family has been deeply touched by drug addiction, the Mental Health Association is one of the best organizations I have ever seen doing this work. When I think about blighted homes, we need enforcement, and we need to hold landlords accountable for maintaining their properties in a way that is safe and welcoming for our communities and our families. Thank you.
Thank you. On to Ms. Eklund now. Is there anything you would do if elected to address drug use, crime, and blighted homes?
I agree with Ms. Porter in that they are three separate issues, but sometimes they're awfully commingled with each other. We all know that drug is an issue. We know it's a disease, but we also know it's a very strong, tough, and ever-growing issue, both for the users as well as law enforcement to combat. You add into that, and Jeff probably could speak more eloquently about this, but bail reform. And the person who is selling the drugs is back on the street, and it's recidivism over and over and over again. That in turn does not help the user, and it does not help a broken system. And intertwined with that is crimes, as we know, around drug use and drug selling comes crimes and other things. But to add to the other avenue of crimes, people are out of work, people are working for less money, people are struggling to get by, so they oftentimes reach two levels that they would not ever reach before. And as far as blight, in my tenure on council, there is not a neighborhood that I have not gotten a call about that a house that may contain one or all three of these things are not in their neighborhood. If you talk about enforcement, we can only enforce so much when court's not in session, and we can only do so much when the hands are tied, when you go in and you make that improvement, and two months later, the housing inspectors are back for the same issue, if not another issue. So, we have to stop the spread of recidivism, both in drugs, crimes, and in blight.
Thank you. On to Mr. Russell now. How would you, sir, if reelected to your post, work to address drug use, crime, and blighted homes?
Well, obviously, I'd like to see the bail reform not be repealed, but it needs to be fixed. The state went too far with bail reform. Basically, now, if you are charged with an E felony or below, you're probably going to get an appearance ticket, and you might see the Jamestown City Jail for less than an hour to do some paperwork. That's scary. So, I talked to one of our drug detectives recently. He arrested someone with 12 bags of heroin, and that person was out of jail within a couple of hours. I know there's a home up on the south side that in the last six months, has been raided three times by our SWAT department, SWAT team, and the people that are selling drugs and using drugs out of that home are out within a matter of hours. So, I would like to see our bail reform. They went too far. I understand that people don't want to see someone sitting in Mayville on a marijuana charge for six months because they can't post bail. But they went too far. As far as the neighborhoods, I think we need stronger enforcement by the DOD. I know they're stretched thin. Possibly putting more staff on with the DOD, and also encouraging more homeownership. We have a 50-50 split of people that own their homes and people that rent their homes. We need to encourage homeownership. People take pride when they own things. They don't want to destroy property when they own it themselves.
Thank you, sir. On to Ms. Detanto now. How would you, if elected to office, address drug use, crime, and blighted homes?
I want to give Kim Eklund some accolades here. She talked about economic development as an issue. People out of work often leads to more drug use and more crime. All along in this debate, I have said economic development is a key factor to Jamestown's renaissance. I, like Jeff, have seen in every neighborhood the impact of drugs, and we know that that is a continuing problem. I'm so pleased to see we're doing more community policing. We're trying to work with our residents to see that there is some positive from policing, and maybe that will help us, again, prevent some crimes, and I do agree about bail reform. We need to do more to make that work. When we look at our neighborhoods and our housing stock, our problems have not been just during this COVID era. We have had housing problems for years, and the Housing Court hasn't been closed for more than 18 months. We need more enforcement. Definitely, the Department of Development needs more code enforcement, and I would like to see us be more aggressive with that. We have 30% of our multi-tenant units in Jamestown are owned by disinterested parties. You're not going to find somebody in Arizona or California who cares about the neighborhood and in Jamestown. So we need to have more local ownership, and I agree with Alyssa Porter about having landlords brought to the table to make sure that they are, in fact, making those homes livable for their renters. Thank you.
Thank you. Now on to Mr. Deversa. How would you, sir, if elected, address drug use, crime, and blighted homes in the city of Jamestown?
Well, I can agree with Kim and Jeff. I can only reiterate the fact, on a national spotlight, the amount of fentanyl and other drugs coming across the border is just phenomenal in the past year and a half. And on a state level, for the bail reformed, and for the police to enforce a lot of these laws affects their morale, and it affects us seeing criminals on the street, because when they need their drugs, they will perform crimes. I believe that police officers, we need, we need definitely two to four more police. I remember years back when they had a tactical unit that would run seven at night till three in the morning, two-man cars in Jamestown. We don't see that much anymore. In fact, you don't see it at all. And so the, I think that needs to be brought back. I think police with the community and working with the kids, they used to have a lot of good programs before where they would interact and go to schools and go to sporting events and, and just, you know, be a big brother at times. I think that would really help. And again, on the code enforcement, it does seem to be lacking. But on the other hand, I talked to a lot of landlords in the way that they are not getting their money and utility bills, they are really hurting with that.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, and I wish we had much more time, but unfortunately, we have to move to closing remarks. And you have 60 seconds each for your closing remarks, and we're starting with Ms. Porter.
Thank you. I just want to take a moment to reiterate that my ultimate goal, if elected as a member of city council, will be to put our community first. I've said that repeatedly throughout this entire election cycle, and people are probably getting tired of hearing it at this point this evening, but that truly is why I am here and why I am doing this. I know I'm not from Jamestown. I know I didn't spend my entire life in this region, but I am one of those young professionals who did choose Jamestown, because I really do believe in the future of our city. And I believe that if we come together, regardless of political affiliation and background or because of the differences in our political affiliations and backgrounds and lived experiences, that we can usher in a brighter future for Jamestown together. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Eklund, you have your closing remarks.
Thank you. Again, thank you very much for hosting us and giving us the opportunity to get our word out and to have the people to listen to all of us and our goals and wishes for this community and this city. I appreciate the support I have gotten throughout my years, both in political, personally, and all the community things I do. I too am a very strong community person, and that is clearly evident. I want what's best for this community. Yes, I was born here. Yes, I came back here after college. And yes, I've been grateful to have a father-in-law retired from the city, a father retired from the city, and a husband retired from the fire department. It's all police and fire parks. So I think my knowledge of the city is pretty strong. I think I bring a lot of things to the table, and I appreciate the opportunity to serve again.
Thank you. Mr. Russell, you have 60 seconds.
Well, like I said in my opening, I was born and raised here, and I've served this community my entire life. To get personal, I didn't plan on retiring from the police department when I did. I retired to take care of my mother, who was dying of cancer. So after her, one of her dying wishes was for me to get out of police work, which I did. But I wanted to stay involved in my community, and that's why I ran for public office. I care about this community, and I care about the direction that it's going. I just have a lot of concerns. When people talk about housing, they're standing on the outside and looking at the house from the outside. I've been in these houses, and they are far worse than what you're seeing from the, from the outside. There's people in this city that are living in deplorable conditions, sometimes not, not on their own. It's the situation that they're in. So I want to continue to serve the city of Jamestown and the citizens of Jamestown, and I would appreciate your support on November 2nd.
Thank you. Ms. DiTanto, you have 60 seconds for your closing.
Thank you, Julia, and thank you again for tonight's sponsors and hosting this event. We have heard a lot of enthusiasm and hope for Jamestown's future tonight, as well as a list of some substantial challenges. I believe that I am the candidate who can bring solid experience, leadership, and new perspectives to the Jamestown City Council. We must be willing to think and govern differently if we are going to survive and thrive. We must reach out to public and private partners. We must demand a seat at the table with the county's development agency, and we must be willing to think in new and different ways. The city has been in economic decline for so long, let's use this opportunity to change our future. I have been proven to be a collaborator. I'm happy to work with any of the candidates sitting here tonight. I have trust among diverse parties to develop solutions on issues and challenges. Jamestown needs leaders who can work together and think outside of the box. I humbly ask for your vote on November 2nd, and I thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Deversa, you have 60 seconds for closing.
Yes. Well, I know we will be facing many challenges in the future, as we always do. And I know that there's good council members here that I see have the best interests in Jamestown, and I'm willing to work with them to follow a common goal. In my eyes, a councilperson is a representative of all the people, not a champion of special interest group or a narrow perspective. A good candidate is one who brings a balanced view, which means I believe we have the ability to work well with professional city staff, and I will. While not automatically deferring to their judgment, doing the right job requires a dedication of time and energy, and that's important, which I have done my whole life. I've worked two and three jobs my whole life. Okay? And I will work with city council on a bipartisan and the mayor if elected. Thank you for your vote.
Thank you. Finally, Ms. Cardinelli, you have 60 seconds.
Thank you very much. Throughout my, it's been a little bit of a short career, but throughout my career, the thing that I have found to be most predominant is, yeah, those are really pretty words, but what are you actually going to do as a constituent? I want to know, what are you going to do as my representative? So that is the representative that I aim to be. So once again, the theme of the night, drug addiction, mental health, we have housing issues, we have code issues. I have solutions for all of that. I want to bring that mobile health unit here, and I have worked very hard to get that established I get elected. That is the first thing that I am going to do. Once again, there are two separate proposals for legislation that I plan to propose immediately if elected. It's regarding the nuisance law for properties. It's very, it leaves a lot to be desired. And also, the rental inspection law. We don't have any regulation in terms of rental inspection. That will help our blight. That will help our city code enforcement. I aim to be proactive, and I hope that you remember that on Election Day. Thank you.
Thank you again to all our candidates so much for being here and representing the city council at large, seats that are available. We will be taking a short break now so we can transition over for our Meet the Candidates' Ward Candidates Forum. And also, don't forget, we have the County Executive Debate taking place at 8:00 p.m. We'll be back in a quick moment here on 107.9 WRFA, Jamestown, New York. Welcome back. We are now going to begin our Candidates Forum for Ward Councils for City Council. This forum will feature City Council Ward Three, where Regina Brackman, who is running on the Democratic line, is facing Robert Reedie II, who is running on the Republican and Conservative lines. We also have City Council Ward Six candidates here tonight. We'll have Thomas Tom Nelson, who is the incumbent running on the Democrat and Working Families line, facing Republican and Conservative line, Andrew Faulkner. So thank you for being with us here tonight. Again, I'm Julia Cecil Hanley, under WRFA Public Affairs Director, and again, being joined once again by our media partners, Terry Frank from Media One's WJTN, and Justin Gould from WNY News Now. The event is being broadcast live on 107.9, streaming on wrflp.com, as well as being streamed live on WNY News Now's Facebook page and wnynewsnow.com/live. This forum is being made possible through funding from the Chautauqua Region Community Foundation and the Corporation for Public Broadcasting. And we have a series of questions that we'll be posing to candidates. Candidates will have four minutes for their opening statements. Afterward, they will have 90 seconds to respond to each question. If the candidate runs out of time, our official timekeeper, Gavin Paterniti, will notify the candidate with the following sound. They will then have 10 seconds after they hear that to wrap off at this, which point, if I need to, I will cut them off nicely. Also, they will be notified when they have 30 seconds remaining on the clock by a sign. So let's begin this section. So again, we drew names from a hat earlier this morning to determine opening statements, and Robert Reedie will be first, followed by Andrew Faulkner and so on. And right now, Mr. Reedie, if you're ready, we have four minutes for your opening remarks.
Thank you, Lydia. I appreciate the invite tonight. My name is Robert Reedie. I'm from St. Clairville, New York originally. I grew up in St. Clairville till the age of 13, when my father medically had to retire from the Department of Public Works. We moved south for his retirement, came back to here after I joined the Air Force in 1983 and served my country proudly. I'm proud American to do that. We came back into the community in 89, and I worked for a company in Jamestown that no longer exists. I chose to possibly retire, being disabled through the military, being a disabled veteran. I chose to open a business in Jamestown, which has flourished and became very proud to have that business. I do a lot in the community, not a lot of involvement with city politics and that. I am new at that, willing and hopefully capable of learning. I do a lot for benefits in Jamestown. We do a lot for the Kaylee Crusades and the Sealy Foundation, things like that. We do a lot of volunteer work. We do a lot of giving back to the community when it comes to some of our services. So hopefully, I can work well with the city. I can work well with the city council, and maybe take a difference, make a change in this community and get things on the right track. I'm hoping that will. So November 2nd, I hope you, you know, give me sponsorship. I appreciate your support tonight. Thank you for having me.
Okay. Thank you. We now move on to Mr. Faulkner. You have four minutes for your opening remarks.
Thank you. Thanks for having us all. Thank you, WJTN, West New York News Now, Terry Frank, everybody. My name's Andrew Faulkner, and I'm running for city council in Ward Six. I've lived in Jamestown for a majority of my life now, and I decided before that I was even out of school that I wanted Jamestown to be my home. It always felt a little bit personal to me when I'd hear people saying that they couldn't wait to graduate and move away, which is part of my motivation in running for city council. I want everybody to be loved, or to love Jamestown and be proud to call it home the way that I do. When I graduated from JHS in 2010, I wasn't sure what my career plans were. I attended JCC and shortly after started my own business, making signs, decals, and offering screen printing. Eventually, this expanded into a full-time job with a storefront downtown for two years. Around the end of the second year, I got accepted into the IBW apprenticeship program, which was an offer that I could not pass up. For five years, I worked full-time and attended class twice a week. I finished the apprenticeship several years ago and was almost immediately given a foreman position, which entitled Running a Crew of Guys and Completing Millions of Dollars Worth of Work Start to Finish. I've made a point of visiting every street in Ward Six over the past month or two. Between riding my bicycle around and walking, I've explored all of our ward. I'd actually be lying if I claimed that I rode my bicycle or walked up the massive hills by the hospital. I cheated and drove up those roads. I spoke with hundreds of Ward Six residents and heard many issues and ideas that they have. There were things that not everyone agrees with, and also some things that everybody does have in common. The number-one issue everyone wants taken care of is the deer, which I'm going to leave at that, because I'm sure we're going to talk about it at some point tonight. One of the things that everybody did agree on is that they are happy to have a younger person that's excited to get involved and try to make a difference. It's been a great experience running for council so far, and I look forward to speaking with more of the individuals in Ward Six in the coming weeks. I was going to close off my introduction with a knock-knock joke, but I think I've already knocked on enough people's doors, so I think I'm good now. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Brack, we have four minutes for your opening remarks.
Thank you, and thank you for hosting us, and thank you for the opportunity to speak. Currently, I am, my name is Regina, Councilwoman Regina Brackman. I grew up in Jamestown, lifelong resident of Jamestown, lifelong resident of Ward Three. I've lived in Ward Three my entire life. I've been very active in our community. From 2014 to March of 2021, I was a member of the Jamestown Planning Commission, and through that commission, I learned a lot about the city government and all the activity that's going on within the city. In March of 2020, with the passing of Victoria, Councilwoman Victoria James, I was approached about fulfilling her seat. And I felt that it was something that I needed to do to continue on the work that she had started. I tell people I will never be Vicky James, but I can do my best to try to support the ward, the people of Ward Three like she did. I work at Trucklight. I've been an employee of Trucklight for over 37 years. I'm currently in the role of the Corporate Inventory Administrator, led many efforts in the growth and development of Trucklight. I'm a member of Blackwell Chapel, Amy Zine Church, where I serve as trustee chair, so I'm very involved with my church. I'm part of the United Way Allocation Board. So along with that, I'm learning more within the community as far as different programs that are available and what's out there for the citizens of the city. There are a lot of people don't know that there's programs out there that could give them assistance. Just trying to think of everything I want to say. Being part of the city council over the last seven months, I've learned a lot. I've interacted more with the community as a planning commission member. I really did not deal with the community members as much, but in these last seven months, I've been out there with the community. I've heard their concerns. I've tried to address their concerns in regards to what's affecting their quality of life, you know? And I just feel that there's a calling on me to do that type of activity, to work with the community, to at least be that voice, to at least get their concerns out there so that they can be addressed and get some type of peace in their life as far as the blight homes, homes that have been destroyed by fires, that are still sitting there, the sidewalk situations. I've heard a lot, and I've made sure that any call that I get or any email that I receive that I at least make sure that I'm responding to the people so that they know that somebody cares about their concerns. So I'm looking forward. I've learned a lot, like I said, during this seven months on city council, and I'm looking forward to continue to learn and to continue to serve the residents of Ward Three and Jamestown.
Thank you. Mr. Nelson, you have four minutes for your opening remarks.
Well, thank you, and good evening, and thank you, WRFA News, for hosting this event. I've been the Ward Six Councilman for the past six years, and I'm running for reelection. I've served as the chairman of the Public Works Committee. I'm a member of the JDLC, the Jamestown Local Development Corporation, liaison to the Planning Commission, and I'm the ad hoc chairman of the Deer Management Committee. I was born in Jamestown. I'm 58. I'm married and have four children. I've taught history at Fruisberg Central School for the past 33 years, coached football, basketball, track, served as the chairman of the Social Studies Department, and I'm also involved as the, as an officer in the Carroll Masonic Lodge. I've been involved as a member of the Scouts, as a leader, as a merit badge counselor. I am a member of Holy Apostles Parish. I'm also, I also serve on the Education Committee at the Jackson Center. I'm endorsed by the Democratic and Working Families Party. My family and my neighborhood have always been the most important thing to me. I bought my first house on Prigging Avenue in 1990, and we didn't have a lot of money, but we had a great neighborhood, and we had, you know, the annual garage sale and block party and, and just, we built some really good relationships, and that's what my platform is based on. I want Jamestown to be a place to raise a family. I want young families to have every opportunity to live and work in Jamestown. I believe the city government should do everything it can to attract and keep young families in Jamestown. The city has so- The city has so much to offer: affordable housing, great schools, great parks, a growing downtown business corridor with the Comedy Center, and a developing Riverwalk. I think our county and city government should do everything it can to create the conditions necessary to support commercial and industrial growth. When people find a good-paying job, they will have the ability to buy homes, shop in our stores, eat in our restaurants. And when we grow and develop our attractions, like the Comedy Center, we make Jamestown better for us and better for tourists to come to the city. As a member of the city council, I've always felt that I'm part of a team. And, you know, I think we've done, as a team, I think we've done an awful lot to make the city more modern in the last few years. For example, this year, I paid my taxes online. Not a big fan of paying taxes, but that was a change that was important, I think. We're much more transparent. Every public meeting is livestreamed, and we're working on language translation services for every department, which increases our accessibility. And we brought back the Human Rights Commission. I think those are all really positive things. We have a lot of new faces around City Hall. We have a new, new police chief, new clerk, new comptroller, new city attorney. And it's really been, I think, my goal to work with them and to, because we all have a common goal, and that is to make Jamestown a better place for, for us and our children and grandchildren. Thank you.
Thank you. We will now move to the first question, which is the only question that was provided to candidates ahead of time. And the question is, what do you think are the top issues or challenges facing the city of Jamestown? Candidates will be given 90 seconds for response, and we start with Mr. Faulkner for this question.
Thank you. In the past few weeks, I've asked many of the Ward 6 residents that I've spoken with what their biggest issue is. Without hesitation, almost every single person says the high taxes that they have to pay. Being at the tax cap with a shrinking tax base makes it extremely difficult for Jamestown to maintain the level of public safety services that we need. We need to focus on economic growth to grow the tax base and potentially lower the tax rate in the future. Another one of the major issues that a lot of people are noticing is the condition of many of the rental properties in Jamestown. People that own their homes tend to maintain them, keep them looking nice, and the houses next to them might be a rental that's in deplorable condition. We need to hold the landlords accountable instead of allowing them to collect their rent and not put any of that money back into the house and leaving it looking, however. Personally, in my own neighborhood, there are several houses that when I drive by them, I'm just disappointed in the condition of them because I take pride in the home that we bought last year. The third biggest issue, obviously because it's a hot topic right now, was the deer problem. Nobody wants it to just go away and get put on the back burner. They want something done with it. It might not be a total city issue, but in Ward 6, that is definitely on everybody's minds at the moment. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. For Ms. Brackman, you have 6, 90 seconds to address what you think are the top issues or challenges facing the city of Jamestown.
Thank you. Just in talking with the residents of Jamestown, what I'm hearing most from them has to deal with the blight housing and the zombie houses and the fact that there's nothing being done to address those homes. And we did speak a little bit earlier about the fact that the DOD is pretty much at a point where they cannot get out and examine every situation. They don't have the code enforcers. The courts are only open one day a week, and the caseload is just ridiculous as far as the number of cases that they are trying to observe. So that's one of the things I, and I spoke a little bit about it as far as the homes that have caught on fire and the fact that they haven't been addressed. I actually drove past a house that had complained, and it's like, they can't even sit out on their porch because all they see is this burnt-out building. You know, they can't open their windows. So I'm hearing a lot of complaints about that as far as what the residents really need and what's affecting them. Again, we go into the nuisance of loud vehicles and speeding vehicles. So it just seems that there's things that are occurring in a city that we really can't control that's really not giving the residents a peaceful life. I got the ding.
Thank you. Mr. Nelson, you have 90 seconds to address what you think are the top issues and challenges facing the city of Jamestown.
Well, again, Jamestown has so much to offer. However, the latest shooting in this city reminds us that public safety is a very important issue, and looking at the city's violent crime statistics, it's evident that violent crime is still a serious problem. So that's one. And I think making sure that our officers have the equipment and training they need is a top issue for the city. Second, revitalizing our neighborhoods is an important issue. A community is only as, as good as its neighborhoods, and doing all we can to provide homeowners and property owners with the financial assistance that they need to make homes safer, healthier, and more affordable should be a priority, and providing that information in Spanish should be a high priority. Third, economic opportunity for all our residents. I want young families to have every opportunity to work and live in Jamestown, and I believe the city could do more to attract and keep young families here in Jamestown. I serve on the Jamestown Local Development Corporation, and I think that could be a vehicle for that. Finally, the American Rescue Plan funds, what to do with that, how to use them wisely. Economic development that is sustainable, I think, is important, and it's gonna take a long-term and strategic vision. And finally, in Ward 6, of course, the deer are a problem. It's not going away, and it should be addressed as soon as possible. Thank you.
Thank you. And Mr. Reedy, you have 90 seconds to respond to what you think are the biggest issues or challenges facing the city of Jamestown.
Again, thank you. When I've talked to some of the people in my area, in my neighborhood, in Ward 3, they are concerned, as Mr. Faulkner said, with taxes. They're not too concerned about that more than they are, as Mr. Nelson said, with public safety. They're concerned with lack of policing, lack of staffing. They don't feel that there is enough law enforcement out there to control that, which I think the Rescue Plan should be looked at to help with that. They're also concerned with the drug involvements in the city. I know the police, again, are very self, are very short-staffed, very stretched out, and they're having trouble controlling that. They're also having problems with the actual, as Ms. Brockman said, with loud cars, high speeding. I see it a lot on Second Street in Mr. Sheldon's Ward, you know, and I've called and enforced that with the police department. They're just concerned with so many different aspects of things that are going on with the city that need to be addressed by city council, that they feel the city council has sat back and really not done much about it. And I believe that the city needs to look at all measures and look at all actions when it comes to controlling urban renewal. Again, with housing, the deplorable housing is unbelievable. It needs to be addressed, along with education on drug abuse, education on a lot of different things when it comes to the dispensaries. They're worried about the dispensaries. We need to get out there, and the big word is educate. Educate our community on what the different aspects of things that are going on that we're gonna bring forward at city council. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks very much, Julia, and good to be with you and Justin again. I do want to bring up something I didn't have a chance to bring up during the first candidates' forum here tonight, and it's been brought up a couple of times already. The idea of a small-scale bow-and-arrow deer hunt in the city has been talked about for many years, even before Councilman Nelson had brought it up. He was able to put forth a proposal that was rejected by the full council this year. Should there be some kind of deer harvest, or what alternatives would you like to see to deal with the issue? And we'll begin with Ms. Brackman.
Thank you. Um, yes, we, we did. We discussed a deer hunt, and I definitely know that there's a need for it within the city of Jamestown. I just believe that there's still more things that need to be locked down in regards to how this would be handled to guarantee the public safety as well as the control of that hunting. We just need to make sure that the people in these areas will not be affected or harmed in any way through this process. So I agree that there needs to be a process. I believe that there needs to be more work on developing that process, and we just need to get to that point.
Thank you. Mr. Nelson, obviously, you're the one who brought the proposal forth. I wanted to get your thoughts, and it kind of sounded like in your opening that you're gonna try again on this.
Yes, I will. As the chairman of the ad hoc committee on deer management, I would like to recommend that the city council revisit this issue next year. Following the 7-2 vote against the proposal, many of the council agreed that the deer are a problem and it needs to be addressed. Deer, we have, we live in a deer factory. You know, the deer have a high reproductive rate. Females can produce young at the age of one, and they average two offspring a year. And if food is abundant and mortality rate is low, the deer populations can double in size every two years. Someone told me the other day, a deer will eat six pounds of food a day. Now, we need to continue to educate the public. We need to persuade them that feeding the deer is illegal and it's harmful to them. As someone who doesn't hunt, you know, I looked at other solutions. We looked at sterilization. We looked at immunocentreption, and they're very expensive and very labor-intensive. I don't think that it can work. We tried looking at every option possible, and I think the plan that we, that the committee proposed can work. I'm open to suggestions from other council members. I'd like to work with them and try to come up with a solution for this. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Reedy, your thoughts about deer? Do you have a lot of deer in your ward?
Not a lot, too many in our area. We see a few here and there down the Shattuck Corn Park area and down on that end of town. I agree with Ms. Brackman. It needs to be addressed. It needs to be handled. The harvest, I understand that. I've not been familiarized with a lot of it. I'm still learning with the inoculations and the PCP programs and the sterilizations. I think a lot of this is, as they said, Ms. Brackman said, that it needs to be brought back to the table. It needs to be addressed. There's not enough planning. There's not enough negotiation. There's not enough understanding of the program in general. Before you go putting hunters out there that are gonna have, again, public safety issues with people just flying bow and arrows around, you have children playing, you have private citizens, you know, pets. You gotta be real careful. I understand they're gonna bring professionals in, but until you bring that to the table with the mayor, with the city council, there needs to be some type of planning action to where you understand and you know what's going on with that program before you just let it go wild.
Mr. Reedy, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Faulkner, I know you have some thoughts on this.
Like I said, my opening, being Ward 6, this is the hot topic right now. I've gotten tons of different opinions from everybody that I've spoken with. A lot of people are for the hunt, a lot of people against the hunt. A lot of people wanted to just know the other options. They thought that the hunt was the only option, and they couldn't understand why, if that's the only thing we can do, why it got voted down. I've done a little bit of research on it, obviously not enough to come up with a comprehensive plan, but there are some birth control options. The gonokon is somewhere between $2 and $10 per dose. That's just the dose. It's pretty labor-intensive to get it. It's hard to track which deer's had it. The Humane Society offers a program where they control the deer population. It's somewhere between $300 and $1,000 per deer, which is probably not feasible. But the hunt, I don't think was the worst thing. I think there were a couple other things in there that needed addressed, a couple tweaks that needed to be made, but something definitely needs to be done. I spoke with a family on Kenny Street, two twin brothers. They've hit four deer in the city in the last five years since they bought their house, all on Willard going to work. The day of the vote, a motorcycle hit a deer in the city the day that it got voted down, and he broke his collarbone. Last week, a lady on a motorcycle hit a deer. So I don't know 100% what the exact best option is that everybody will agree on. Something definitely needs to be done. I can't have a garden at my house because it gets eaten. My parents can't have a garden at their house because it gets eaten, but a little bit more research, I think we could come up with a plan, maybe a combination of a few of these things, a hunt and some birth control, sterilization, something along those lines. Thank you.
Thank you, candidates.
Thank you, Terry. I asked this last question at our previous debate, and I feel it's important to continue the conversation here. The city of Jamestown, over the past few decades, has seen an increase in drug use, crime, and blighted homes, some of which have become more than just an eyesore to our neighborhoods, but a danger to the public. Is there anything you would do if elected or re-elected to address these issues? We'll start with Councilman Nelson.
Well, yeah, these are three tremendously challenging issues for the city, and, I mean, one of the things that we've done recently to address the blighted home situation is the mayor has just started the lawsuits using the 19A program for the zombie properties, which I think was a great idea because we have, you know, abandoned properties that need to be either cleaned up or sold, or, you know, they need to be, it needs to be addressed, and I think this will help a lot. As was said earlier, you know, the drug addiction, probably the best thing we do is create jobs and economic development, and using the, the Mental Health Association for Prevention, I think, is so important, too. These are challenges. They've been challenges for the city of Jamestown as long as all of us have lived here, and, but we do need to continue to address them, and I hope with some of the funds from the Economic Recovery Funds that we're getting, I hope we can use those funds for that as well.
Mr. Nelson, thank you. To Mr. Reedy, anything you would do if elected to address drug use, crime, and blighted homes in our city?
Well, as we know, and it was stated earlier, that a drug, drug problem is out of control. It comes from the southern borders. You know, I don't believe you're gonna control it to where you're gonna end it. I believe that it is at hand. It's here. It's, it's an issue. We need to make landlords responsible for letting drug dealers rent their apartments, giving them cash, and just saying, you can live here. They get, the house gets raided or the house gets watched by the police, they move, they move into somewhere else. The landlords let another drug dealer move in because they're getting a large amount of money. Landlords need to be held responsible for that, whether they lose their houses by eminent domain, they're fined, whatever it may be. We need to do, as Mr. Nelson said, mental health. We need to educate. I believe we also need some type of long-term rehab in this community, or in this county even, to where people that want help with drug problems can go, whether they're just not going for a 30-day or 28-day program and putting back on the streets. Agencies need to work with Department of Social Services and your Department of Labor's. Get people work. Get people jobs. Get them a place to live. Get them off the streets. Deassociate them with the past environment. And I think you need to really put more money towards your policing and your police enforcement to where, you know, the police have the tactical, you know, persuasions to actually go out and do something about it and have the staffing to do it.
Thank you, sir. To Mr. Faulkner now, is there anything you would do if elected to council to try to combat drug use, crime, and housing issues?
Thank you. As mentioned, the city's getting a bunch of money from the American Rescue Plan. I think that if I got on city council, I would advocate for more of that money to be put into the places that it's needed: public safety, mental health, things like that. As Mr. Reedy said, the drugs are out of control. Everybody knows that. It's no secret. And I do believe that there is a mental health issue associated with that, and these people, as mentioned earlier, get busted selling drugs and they're right back out on the streets. We need to come up with a way to cut that down, and I think that can make our neighborhoods safer, make our neighborhoods look better. Also, I know that there's a backlog of the code enforcement cases right now. They're kind of in a transition. We need to make sure that that gets pushed through, any, any resources they need, they should have access to, so that we can cut down on these cases and make these houses look nicer, make everybody have a neighborhood that they're proud to live in.
Thank you, sir. And finally, on to Councilwoman Brackman. Is there anything you would do if re-elected to your position to combat drug use, crime, and blight?
And I, I think a lot of this is starting to just, you know, be that repeating cycle. I mean, public safety, obviously, the police reform and the fact that, you know, you can do the crime and you're out within five minutes, and you're back in your house and you're selling drugs. With the ARPA money, to see more go towards mental health, I see it. It's, it's a huge presence in Jamestown, and we can't keep overlooking it. We need to address the mental health issues, the drug issues, and we need to give education and assistance to the people that need it. Again, I'll go back to the housing situation, and we know that there's an issue with code enforcements, but we really need to address that situation as far as making sure that people have stable, livable housing that they can live in. I would just continue to advocate for the people in those issues to make sure that the city is doing whatever we can to address those problems.
Thank you. Julia?
Thank you. And we are coming now to our closing remarks for tonight. And for each candidate, you are limited to 60 seconds each, and we will start with Mr. Reedy. You have 60 seconds for your remarks.
Well, I hope that getting elected to city council will make a difference. I hope that I can work with the candidates, the mayor, a lot of the upper legislature, and make a difference in the city. Bring back, as we've discussed, public safety. Bring back police reform, as Regina mentioned. Try to educate our police officers, get some more staffing. We have a lot of lack of staffing. I spoke with Chief Kuhn today, spoke with Captain Forster last week, and they're both concerned about equipment, they're both concerned about short staffing. We need to do something with the city and the community to bring back Jamestown pride and basically bring back our community feeling safe to walk the streets and not have to worry about the crime rate and the drugs that we have in that city now.
Thank you, Mr. Reedy.
Thank you.
Mr. Faulkner, you have 60 seconds for your closing remarks.
Thank you. In closing, I just want to say a few things. The most important thing that I want everybody to remember is to get out and vote this year. You can either vote early, starting this weekend, or on November 2nd. This year is generally going to be a lower turnout year since there's no mayor, there's no governor, no presidential race. But in reality, local politics should be everybody's main focus because it is in your backyard. If anybody wants more information or wants to speak with any of the candidates, I encourage you to reach out to any one of us and see who responds to you, how they respond, who gives you the time. I'm sure we all have Facebook pages, our phone numbers can probably be found online. I myself have a personal Facebook page under my name, Andrew Faulkner. I also have a page that I put up, Andrew Faulkner for Jamestown City Council. I've been getting messages on there, and I would love to speak with as many residents of Jamestown, especially Ward Six, as I can. So to finish this out, on November 2nd, I just hope everybody remembers Faulkner for Jamestown.
Thank you, Mr. Faulkner. Ms. Brackman, you have 60 seconds for your closing remarks.
Thank you very much. I agree with Andrew, the biggest thing is to get out and vote. If you want your concerns addressed, then you need to get out and vote for the person that you think will best represent your needs. I'm a resident, been a resident of Jamestown my whole life, I'm a homeowner. I deal with the same things you all deal with on a daily. So I would put my time and effort into making sure that your needs are met as well as mine. So get out and vote. You really can't complain if you're not going to vote. And let's see what happens November 2nd.
Thank you, Mrs. Brackman. Mr. Nelson, finally, you can have your closing remarks for 60 seconds.
Yeah, thank you and thank you again for the opportunity to speak tonight. As part of the council, I've always felt like I'm a member of a team. And for the past six years, I've worked hard with the mayor and the other council members, the staff, to really connect residents with what they need. You know, so when I get a call, I can help make that connection so that they can, we can address the problem that they have. That's, that's really how I have always seen that job. I've built some good relationships working with, you know, Jeff Lehman as in Public Works and working with Crystal Certicant Development and Elliot Romano, our attorney, or, and Dan Stone in Parks. And I think I can use those relationships to now improve people's, well, whatever they need, you know? I've, I've worked hard to establish that, and I think I can bring that experience back to the council for two more years. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Nelson. And thank you to the four of you for being here with us tonight. I so appreciate you being part of this meet the candidates forum for board candidates. And this will conclude this portion of the meet the candidates forums for city council for at-large and for Ward. We do ask listeners and people who are viewing this to, you know, bear with us, we will be taking a short break. We will be back again at 8 o'clock for our county executive debates with County Executive PJ Wendell and Democratic challenger Norm Green. So we'll be starting that again at 8:00 PM. Thank you for being with us here on WRFA.